First order of this is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First order is the public hearing on the budget of 2023. At the current time, the board has put together a budget with the help of, what's her name, Rudy? And we've done several things in the budget. Number one, we reduced our reliance on reserves. We dropped it down to $395,000. Last year it was $425,000. And we've increased the budget by 0.835%, which is less than 1%. I think some of the highlights of the budget is based on the inflation and the cost of living adjustment. We made sure all of our employees were taken care of and had a baseline of 8.7%, similar to what the social security system is doing for the social security recipients. And other than that, does anybody else have a comment on some of the things we discussed? I just want to tell the public that what we do is we have an open but public meeting and we had that in October. And with the five board members, including Rudy, and we interviewed all of the departments separately. They gave their requests, what they wanted, what they thought they needed. And we either approved them or we altered them or increased them. So now I'm going to open up the discussion to the public. And for anybody of public comment, please identify who you are and then please ask the question to anybody on the board. Okay? Okay, so wait a second. I think I said if you look in a minute, identify yourself.
Name and address.
You should have a few things I want to say.
The first one is his name and address.
Yes, exactly.
I'm Ed Doty. I live at 15 Oak Avenue in Chester Heights, Chester Park, Chester. One of the D. Simone stamping grounds next to it in the Village of Pelham. I create mail for Molly providing me with a copy of the budget. I have a couple of questions which I shared with Cara about specific items. But the main, and I can go over those, but the main point I wanted to make had to do with the allocations for senior citizen programs.
Now, are you speaking as a president or an officer of senior citizen?
No, I'm speaking as myself.
As a citizen, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
I can also speak as.
As an officer or as?
No.
Okay, okay. As a citizen. As a citizen. What page are you referring to?
I'm not going to refer to a page yet.
Page 12 is senior citizens.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Do we have to put a time limit on you?
There are a couple of things. In Westchester County, the county did a survey using the census data of how many seniors there were. According to the Westchester County, 30% of the population of Village of Pelham are people over 65. And 20% of the population of Pelham Manor are people over 65.
So 30% of the Village of Pelham, 20% of the Manor, okay?
And in addition, 24% of the Village of Pelham seniors, people over 65, live alone.
I'm sorry, what was that percentage?
24%. And 11% saying in the Pelham Manor live alone. So we've got a substantial population of people in our town. There are just two other statistics. Of the people who are over 65 in the Village of Pelham, 9% are mobility challenged. And in the Manor, 6% are mobility challenged or have some kind of disability of some sort, but they call them mobility challenged. The.
And these percentages you get from where?
They came from the, which I'm sure you've seen, the Westchester County Department of Senior Services on their update to the 2024 area plan on the use of the older Americans Act and New York State.
I've never seen that. Has anyone on your board?
No.
No.
I didn't even know it was.
I'm surprised because I would think you should. This is an important document put out by the Department of Senior Services. But they're based on the census data that was there. The main point I wanted to make in terms of the county budget, a lot of stuff that's very well described. I had some specific questions which I pointed out to Cara. But the overall situation, let me just get the place where the figures are.
Page 12.
No, where I wrote them.
Oh.
Page 10.
10.
They're just things that I discovered.
Okay.
The recreation department has a budget of 1.6 million, which also includes 135 and then includes the senior advocate stuff. Of that amount, 5.6% of the budget, or if you include the senior advocate stuff, 9.5% of the budget is specifically allocated for senior programs and senior projects. And I think that should be increased with 30% of our population.
I don't know how you just did that because all of our employees assist the senior citizens.
Oh, no, I didn't look at the total budget.
Well, you just said 9% of it or something, didn't you?
I looked.
You assume that you're not including the rec supervisor or the other people.
Yes, no, I am including all that.
Yes, that assists the senior citizens.
The recreation department has a separate.
I understand that, but you just said only part of it is for the senior citizens.
No, if the total.
I'm sorry, just say it again, I'm sorry.
The total budget of the recreation department plus the separate line items here for senior advocate is 1.6 million.
But what you don't see is the revenue portion.
Right.
The revenue portion, they bring in revenues that was that one million dollars.
It ends up going down to about 400,000.
Of the total expense of 1.6 million, the total amount that's expended on seniors is 9.5%.
How do you get that number?
I took the total amount.
Right.
That was listed and I divided it.
By?
What expenses are you taking for senior citizens?
Well, first of all, the total recreation department.
I know, it's a million, we went through that. What are you saying is specifically for senior citizen?
The recreation supervisor for senior citizens. Is that, it's $50,992.
Okay.
And that's the only thing listed under recreation. And senior citizens, $5,000.
Okay.
And then I took the total amount of under senior citizen advocate, which is $49,000.
Okay.
To put those together, divided them.
How can you do that when the senior citizens, that building is maintained by a person that we pay money for? And that person cleans up after the senior citizens, okay? We, our total staff on the recreation department supports the senior citizens. So you can't just say there's one person you go to because Mike joins, Diane joins.
Nikki.
Nikki joins. So it's very, it's, you can't do it like that and say, well, Dan McLaughlin is only takes care of the supervisor job. Dan McLaughlin also goes here, Dan McLaughlin also goes there, Dan McLaughlin also goes there. So you can't take my salary and say it's only here. You don't understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but that isn't the way the budget is written.
Well, that's, you can't write it in the other.
Well, yes, you did. You wrote the budget, you put a section for supervisor, you put a section for finance controller, et cetera. You allocated these things.
If I, if we were to do that, I would have to allocate to the senior citizens Felix's salary, Phil D. Simone's salary, Diane's salary, Nikki's, Nick's salary, Mike's salary, the rent that we, and a premises expense I would have to put. The van. The van.
But you separated those things.
But I'm saying, we don't do allocations like that. That budget is not as sophisticated to do allocations.
Right.
So I would have to allocate something to the soccer program. I'd have to allocate something to the baseball program, allocated to the pickleball program. We don't have a sophisticated allocation system. So the expenses show up that way, but then that allocated to the particular program. So for instance, if you're using the townhouse 20 hours a week and the civics are using it 5 hours a week, I should, we should be allocating the expenses for the townhouse, 20% against the civics, 5% against the civics, 20% against the senior citizens, 50% against the court. It'd be very difficult to do that.
How much do you think you spend on senior services?
If I allocate it, I don't know. To be honest with you, I don't know.
And you also need to count the free, what's not included are the free rec activities like the exercise class, the arts and crafts classes, and those are under rec. They are not under senior advocate.
So how much do you think that you spend on senior activities? I mean, if you don't have an idea of how much you spend, you can't say, well, we're spending as much as we should.
Well, is your point that we're not spending enough money? Is that where you're going, Ed? Why don't you just get there?
Why don't you, this is what I asked before in the meeting that we had with Cara. Give us a list of what you want us to do. And that list has not come to the fore at this point. But you said you wanted movies. Do we have movies now?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
There were two the last month.
So we have responded as a board, as a group, but we can't respond to something if you're not asking us what you really want. So if the library says to us, we want this program or that program, we see if we can afford to do it by taxing the 70% of the other population and the.
Well, actually, for the library, you just give them some.
No, 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 we allocate programs as well.
Well, that's not the way it's listed in your budget.
That's because that's not, the library has their own budget.
I just want to add something that you wouldn't necessarily know about. We did talk about it a little bit at the last meeting, but since the last meeting, myself, Supervisor McLaughlin, and Phil D. Simone, who's our part-time caretaker, facilities person, we met over at the townhouse and did a walkthrough and then we submitted, I submitted with Supervisor McLaughlin and Phil's input, a request to Senator Biagi's office for SAM funding that would renovate the kitchen in the townhouse, specifically with an eye towards a full-size refrigerator and an oven stove for, specifically really for the seniors as you all came to us a few months ago and said that was part of something that was missing, oven to heat up food or be able to have hot lunch or for special occasions and also to store food. We also put an allocation in for storage, like re-making the kitchen larger, adding storage for some of the materials that's being used. It included new doors in the townhouse and carpeting for the big room and some storage solutions. So we did put, I did send that in. I do feel hopeful that we will, that the money will be allocated to us. I was told that they have money in their leftover, in their SAM funding allocation. So I just wanted you to know that because it's not reflected in here, but the town would pay for that and then we would be reimbursed. But again, that was with really an eye towards how do we help the seniors in the townhouse and give them some. Oh, and I forgot to mention, it also renovates the bathrooms because the bathrooms that are there are quite old.
So what programs would you like to see funded that the senior citizens would like to have? And if you come back to us with that, we'll see if we can find a funding.
Good, yeah. I mean, I appreciate the work of the budget and I appreciate Molly finding a copy of the budget so I could take a look at it. And I think that this is really an important area of work for you all. And I think that a re-energized senior citizen program is important for the town as things are. None of you are aging, but some people are. And it's an important thing if we want to keep seniors in Pelham. So I appreciate all that and I appreciate the careful work in the budget and keeping things in tax cap controlled, et cetera. All that's very good. And I do appreciate hearing about the possibility of renovation or that kind of thing. And if there are ideas, we'll come back.
Please, can you, did that report, did you get that by a hard copy or did you get it?
The Westchester County.
The Westchester County report.
Because Ed serves on the advisory board.
I'm on the council, the Westchester County Council for Seniors.
But can you send that to us by email or no?
Well, it's pretty.
No, that's what I'm asking. Did you get it digitally or did you get a hard copy, Wes?
I got it when I went to the annual public forum and speak out on Wednesday, October 26th. I gave them out. I can get them to send you a copy.
That would be wonderful.
It really would be, it really would be.
It's filled with lots of information about nutritional activity, you know, all kinds of services. And it's listed by towns and cities. And if you take a look and you see, well, how come, I mean, Scarsdale doesn't get much, that's true. But there are lots of towns that are like not as small as us, but there are towns that have mixed populations and are all poor people, you know, et cetera, and they get a lot of services. And I think that this is something that we can look into to get.
Does the county have a liaison that works with communities specifically on this type of thing?
No, what the county has is different departments in the department. So there is a nutritional person.
Oh, okay.
And there's a, you know, and the rec department had the nutritional person come by in the last two months and said, at least what I had back was that, well, you guys didn't apply for it. So that's why you don't have the thing and maybe you don't qualify, you know.
Yeah.
But they have, they have lots of people in these various departments.
Can I make a suggestion or this is not allowed? With that, not me making a suggestion, the suggestion I'm going to make. Shouldn't you take maybe the senior citizen advocate to, with you at one of these meetings or ask her to attend one of those meetings?
Sure, we'd be glad to, yeah. The president of the Pelham Seniors Club and I went to visit a couple of senior citizens. We went to Newishaw, we went to Lewisburg, which is more similar to Pelham. But, you know, this is something that would be great for people to.
Because then she could come to us and tell us about the programs as well.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I happen to speak to Carolyn V., I think I was talking to her about rec basketball. But she did mention she was on her way to what sounded to me like the Westchester Municipal Officers Association events that we attend. There was a, there was a meeting similar to that for senior advocates along around the county. And she was attending that, she said it was in East Chester. So it's just kind of like in the course of the conversation, she let me know she was doing that. So to your point, it'd be great. I'm sure she met other senior advocates from other towns and municipalities and maybe she found out what they're up to and perhaps we can see what's going on.
And did you also want to mention what's happening this week?
What's happening this week?
Senior citizens luncheon that we're paying for.
Oh.
There is a senior citizens luncheon and it's partially subsidized by the town. It's also partially subsidized by the people who go. And it's at the Davenport Club and it's the annual thing evidently. I went last year, Dan showed up last year. People would be most welcome to pop in and say hello. And I think some elected officials will do that and that'd be good, yeah. So, yes.
So we have, we're supposed to vote on the budget.
That's correct.
So you, what I would recommend though, and tell me what you think, you would have to come back to us before we vote on it with your requests.
No, I don't think that's necessary.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think, I think basically, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think basically.
Well, you were mine.
I think basically it's a matter of assigning personnel to do particular jobs that want to get done.
Right, okay, right.
Well, also I think that if there are expenditures that we want to make, we can come back. They won't be big expenditures compared to.
Find it within this budget, yeah.
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 Yeah, well, we don't know what that thousand or that 8,500, what they go for. So, and maybe they.
8,500 expanded, expanded projects and special events?
Yeah. So maybe this is something that they already figured out what they want, you know, recreation. But I don't know what it is. But in any case, there's.
Where is that?
That's in addition to.
That's in, yeah.
That's in addition to the senior citizen advocates area where you have more expenses for the senior citizens specifically. It's $49,560.
Yeah, although most of that is salary.
What?
Most of that is.
$8,000 for the senior.
No, the total, the total, the total budget, right.
But why was the total budget 82 last year?
And that.
$20,000 is senior citizen grant.
Well, we call that a grant because that was money that was specifically for the use for the senior citizens. That is where the new van came out of. That was part, and there's money left over in that line for the senior.
So there's $20,000.
Yeah.
That'd be, yeah.
And that's probably the question I had. Yeah. Yeah, it corresponds with the line on.
No.
Schedule B.
One of the questions back there was do we need to spend that money this year? No.
Oh, we could, or you could, you could decide.
Well, if you, if the senior citizens come to us and they wanted, for sure.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
I don't know if this is the right time, but is the address all about 37 Fourth Avenue?
DOT.
Does.
DOT.
The sanitation with the trucks have anything to do with you guys' money?
No, no.
Because I heard today, not till March, because I have a problem with trucks and all.
I just saw that under Pelham Examiner.
Yeah, it's not till March, but garbage, the bins are supposed to still be coming, which I'm supposed to get nine because I have a three-family house where I'm going to put nine garbage in and none of you fit into my garbage room.
Sorry, it's not fun.
Yeah, I called them, so I was trying to figure that out.
Yeah, that's Village.
Village of Pelham.
One night, nice one.
While you're there asking about Christmas lights.
So I would have to bring up anything about the, I see now they're fixing the street over here in front of Rock Falls, not Rock Falls, where the opening is, where Travis was.
Yeah.
I don't know, does anybody know?
Is that, yeah.
No, that's not us either.
Does anybody know what they're doing?
No, but I did see that today.
The concrete, I know that, but for what? There's a fence in the way. But the fence was open this morning.
And I saw some construction equipment in there.
Anything about that project.
No.
No.
But that was one of the questions that came to my mind as I pulled into the parking lot today.
They probably are responsible for the sidewalk.
Right.
It's in bad shape and.
It could just be that simple, yeah.
Any other comments? Thank you for your comments, they were well taken. And again, we look forward to working with you. Okay, so now if there are no further comments from the public, I think we, I need a motion to approve the budget for 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, guys. And if you want to hang around here and listen to us talk, you're more than welcome.
And the agenda is up there, right, so we can see what you're talking about.
Yes.
Yeah, the agenda right there. All right, I'd like a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the legislative meeting. Okay, the first thing in the legislative meeting is the approval of, well, we actually have approval of two minutes.
Yeah.
So let's take the first approval of the November legislative meeting. Has everybody received a copy of it?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions or changes?
No, it was very thorough, thank you.
I will point out, I think on the special meeting at the bottom of the last.
We're not doing the special meeting yet.
I'm sorry.
We're doing the legislative. If there are no changes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next approval is for the special meeting that we had.
Thursday evening.
Is it Thursday?
Yeah. Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday evening.
It's November 30th, yes.
Thank you, yeah.
And we have a copy of the minutes, everybody received it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
It was Thursday, wasn't it?
That was Wednesday.
It was Wednesday.
It was November 30th.
I'm losing my mind, people.
That's Wednesday.
My goodness.
And that was Wednesday. Yes, because I had the round table on Tuesday, that's why we couldn't do Tuesday.
Did everybody get the minutes?
Yes.
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 Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Molly wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At the very end of those, you guys moved into executive session and then you came out of executive session. At the very end, it said, when we left the meeting, it said to move to executive session again, which is wrong.
Which is incorrect.
That's correct, that's right, we did not go back in.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, I just, I just seen that.
I did not see that.
Yeah, okay, so you took that out. Okay, that's correct. So do I have a motion to approve the corrected minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you took care of that. That was a little confusing then. Okay, so Deputy Supervisor Zemansky with the fly car.
Yes, before I begin with the statistics, I just want to publicly say that the RFP is completed. It was posted December 1st. Anybody interested who is watching this is welcome to come to the Town of Pelham Town Hall and pick it up from Molly. And it is due, the responses are due January 16th. Correct? I got that all right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so just wanted to say that. For the month of November, there were 40 calls in the Village of Pelham, 30 calls in the Village of Pelham Manor, one call on 95 and three calls on the hutch. The backup time for the ambulance, average backup time is eight minutes and 28 seconds. For the fly car, 51% of the time, the call was answered in five minutes and under and 73% of the time, the call was answered in six minutes and under. So that runs pretty much the same every month on those response times. It's the backup ambulance time that continues to be the problem. So we'll see who answers the RFP and see what other things we can consider. So that's it for me.
Any questions for Deputy Supervisor Zemansky and the fly car?
The what?
Code of Conduct.
Oh, my God, I forgot. Tonight.
You don't have to do it.
Huh?
We don't have to do it tonight.
We'd have to do it the next meeting.
We have to do that.
Yeah, we have to do it. We have to do it.
Sorry.
That's my fault.
So.
Sorry.
We have a code of conduct that we are in the process of reviewing, but this was a very busy month. but this was a very busy month and a very busy meeting, so I think probably next month will be very busy.
Yes, we'll put it, we'll put it on next month.
Yeah, but we'll, we will get to it next month, yeah.
Councilwoman McLaughlin on the recreation.
Thank you, Supervisor McLaughlin. Sign up for the winter rec activities are underway. Well over five hundred kids are signed up for winter after-school programs. The programs begin in January, so there will definitely be more signups along the way, and sign up is still open, so until a specific item is closed out for reaching capacity. Over four hundreds kids are playing basketball, are involved with the basketball programs. They're at each of the elementary schools, in the middle school, and high school. Some upcoming holiday events. The special needs holiday party is Wednesday, December seventh. The Hanukkah menorah lighting event is on December nineteenth, which is the second night of Hanukkah, and it is from four to eight P.M. Some upcoming events, the YMCA teen nights will be just.
Started.
There was one that just happened on December third, there's one on January seventh, February fourth, and March fourth. Pickleball on Saturday mornings at Hutchinson School starts December tenth, and there are twenty-four players, which is very exciting, and I believe there's a waitlist for it. Chess tournament on Sunday, December fourth, at the townhouse, had forty players, which was excellent amount. In November, the seniors had a very busy month. There was exercise class Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. The Monday meetings now have a theme or a specific visitor. Their, the fire chief from, I believe, Village of Pelham came. The Hutchinson School Student Government came to present to them. The civics sponsored a Thanksgiving lunch, and then the town historian Art Sinta came and gave a lecture about the history of Pelham. The Wednesday programs were filled with movie days and arts and crafts days. The senior holiday party is December eighth. Oh, and the casino trip was last week. So a lot of exciting activities all around.
Just one.
And I'll let you go over the, the tree lighting.
The Hanukkah thing is from four to six, not four to eight.
Six, oh, okay, thank you, four to six.
Reason for that is that the American Legion comes into the townhouse.
At that time.
It's after.
After that, okay.
Is it inside the townhouse or outside, like last year?
It's usually outside.
Well, he, yes, that's your question, but I think they're doing a laser type game inside and then lighting it outside.
Okay.
He, he's.
You said the nineteenth?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's pretty, uh.
Which is a Monday.
He's pretty creative in what he does. Last year, they had that, uh.
They had those dancers.
But no, before that, he had a, what do you call that?
Giant ice.
No, that was two years ago. When you go around, oh, come on, you need.
A scavenger hunt.
Thank you, scavenger hunt.
That's right. They have a scavenger hunt, yes.
At a different store.
That's right, on Fifth Avenue.
Yes, that was exciting.
Yeah, so.
The thing I don't like is they have the fire truck that drops the candy. I'm like, that just seems so dangerous, thus far, no one's gotten hurt, but.
It didn't happen last year, I'm not sure that they're doing it.
They did something different last year.
It was like chocolate coins?
Yeah, they toss them and they drop.
The gel.
Yeah.
The gel.
For the senior citizens party, are we invited to that?
Well, you want to answer that question?
Not that I'm aware of.
I just think it'd be great. If you could pay, that'd be great too.
That, that's the key, that's the key. If you want to go, you need to pay, but that's not the, but if you want to show up and show your face and welcome them, that's, that's what I'm doing.
I see, okay.
When is that, when is it?
December eighth.
That's Thursday.
Twelve o'clock.
Okay, okay.
At the Davenport.
At the Davenport.
Okay.
At the Davenport. You have, anyone have questions for Kara?
No, it's not really good stuff.
Just that one question.
The teen night is really quite a, quite a, an amazing thing. My son did it this past Saturday, and I just, it's really incredible. For ten bucks, the kids have such a great, two hours on a Saturday night, a place to go. It was awesome. Yeah, the pool, apparently the lifeguard was a little strict, but beyond that, they had a really good time.
Which is good, we want everyone to be safe.
I'm just really impressed with the program.
That's at the YMCA?
Yeah.
And they're, yeah, and they can take a bus from here.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a bus from here, and it's a great partnership, you know, thanks to the CEO, Jen Safsel, who's a Pelham resident.
She'd actually like to do more, she approached me about doing more.
Be great.
Maybe we could do something for the seniors.
Senior swim?
Senior swim.
Oh, that'd be nice.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
I can follow up with her on that.
Okay, Councilwoman Burke?
Okay.
Court legal?
So the courts, they continue to work on staffing. Put it the nicest way possible. It's been an ongoing process for a few months. Justice Kagan had his first jury trial a week or so ago, although the defendant pled guilty. But they, they seem very busy, you know, when I pass by in that morning, Wednesday morning, it's, you know, they're, they're pretty busy these days, but things are going well in the courts. I can talk about the constable handbook, I posted that for everybody to review. It was very outdated, what did I say, it was from like two thousand and six or two thousand and seven or something, and very old. Mostly just made verbiage changes. I guess a couple of the substantive changes, there was nothing on like background checks, I think that's pretty important to have. I tried to not overlap it too much with the regular employee handbook, so I tried to reference it, but there were some things that I just thought had to be there. And if they have another sort of full-time position, it's up to the discretion to hire if there, if there could be a potential conflict. So those, those are like the only two major substantive changes, but we could go line by line if anybody wants.
I don't, I, I looked at it, I thought you did a great job.
Okay, thank you.
And I know you did it with Steve.
Yes, yeah.
So with the chief, so.
We went line by line together, and, and he was happy with it, so.
You did a great job with it.
Thank you, thank you.
So do we have to vote?
I think we probably have to vote.
I would think so.
It has to be approved by the board, yeah, yeah. So what do I make a motion to? That's Dan's job.
Well, I can make a, I'll make a motion to accept the updated constable handbook that was, that was worked on by Councilwoman Burke and Chief Conti.
Date twelve to twenty-two.
Yeah, dated twelve to twenty-two.
I second.
We have a motion on the floor? Do we have a?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great job.
Thank you.
Yes, excellent.
And I told Steve I could do training on it, you know, very brief, because I know that, you know, I don't want to take too much of their time, but I think it might be helpful, at least this first rollout of this new version, I could do like a brief training, right, if you want to join me.
And, and Steve has this?
Yes, because he was CC'd on this last version, and then I'll clean it up and, and get it out.
Great.
Yeah, the only other thing I'll say is I was on this sustainability roundtable this past week on Tuesday. It was just an amazing, an event organized by the Junior League. Dr. Champ was on the panel, Eco-Pel, these high school Pelham eliminates plastics, unbelievably incredible women. So the roundtable was fantastic, and just gave me a lot of really good ideas. And, and we are doing a lot, I mean, we, what I said is that in my closing remarks, we're doing what we can. You know, we have a small footprint, right, but we're doing benchmarking of our, of our buildings right now on, you know, use, energy usage. We're working with the C E C, Clean Energy, you know, to partner, we do the campaigns, but always thinking of other ideas. They talked about like porous paving, and, you know, if we're going to be repaving our, you know, back here, parking lot back here, it's something to think about. The native plants was something that was very, brought up a lot as helpful, so I thought we would, we, you know, Dan and I talked, maybe we talk to Ragno and see is that something we can do here? Just sort of anything that we can do to help. And even, you know, somebody brought up, people use our facilities, could we at least encourage everybody to bring, use sustainable, you know, utensils and stuff? So for the seniors, right, so maybe in our facilities use policy, we can add, you know, to the extent practical could people, you know, just any little way that we could help. And then lastly, the clean heating and cooling campaign is finally going to be rolling out in January, which I think that timing is much better, it was going to be too hard to do it this fall and, you know, leading up now to the holidays, so, so more to come on that, and that's it for me. Oh, my reports.
There's no fiscal reports, I was just going to say. You have no fiscal reports to read?
I will read them as fast as I can, okay. Receiver of taxes for the month of November twenty-twenty-two. Town tax, town county taxes for twenty-twenty-two, received an amount of eleven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-one cents. School taxes received thirty-three, three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and zero eight cents. School collection fee, two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Refund an amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and, I think that says fifteen cents. And penalties and interest received, eleven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-four cents. Leans, received twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Pro-rata is two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-nine cents, for a total received of three hundred and fifty-four dollars, three hundred, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. Okay, and lastly, we have our two justice reports for the month of October twenty-twenty-two. Justice Gardner received an amount of seventy-one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. And for the month of October twenty-twenty-two, Justice Kagan received an amount of ten thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. And that is it.
That number for Gardner is the, I think one of the largest numbers I've seen. Seventy-one thousand six eighty, I wonder what that is.
I don't know, actually.
Too bad we don't get it, anyway.
Could it be the increase in the, um.
Tickets?
The cost of the tickets?
Wow.
Oh, right.
Didn't they decrease that?
They did, but it's.
But it's, there's a lag, right? That probably is it, I will get an update from, from, right. I will get it, I will find out.
Any questions for Councilwoman Burke?
No, but I apologize for not doing that code of conduct. That was my error, I take responsibility for it, though it'll be on January's agenda.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be thorough, we'll do a thorough review then.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Curtin on the library.
The next meeting of the Pelham Public Library trustees.
Is Wednesday.
Is again this Wednesday.
I know it.
Isn't that unbelievable?
We, so at the last meeting, though, we were, I think it was revealed that, or it might have already been revealed, but it was discussed that the next novel night for twenty-twenty-three has a date, it's September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. So make sure you save the date.
When is it?
Novel night, September thirtieth.
That's early.
It's early because they had such a big success with it last year, because posts were able to have it outside. And they really thought that went over very well. And they do it in late November, difficult to have it outside, so, September thirtieth.
More people outside.
Apparently, more people outside, more revenue.
And also people, right, they can, people who have big backyards, but small houses can.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
Volunteer their homes.
We, so, you know, all of the programming that the library is doing, and there's so much of it, there's, there's local authors giving talks, signing books this month, there's storytime, there's crafts, there's multiple crafting activities, everything's on the Pelham Public Library website. Back by popular demand, New Year's Eve, which is Saturday this year, Saturday, December thirty-first, for those residents with younger children, or you just like to go to bed early. They're doing the noon Year's Eve, which goes from ten-thirty A.M. to twelve P.M., yeah. Yeah, I think it was well, very well attended last year. Ten-thirty A.M. to twelve P.M., and they do a countdown clock beginning of, I would imagine at eleven-fifty-nine A.M. They do a countdown clock. And there's crafts and, you know, different things to keep everybody entertained, so, that's, that's just a fun highlight. I already told you about the SAM funding I put in a request for. The, just, just to consolidate that one more time, we put in, we asked, requested funding to renovate specific areas of the townhouse, including the bathrooms, creating a larger kitchen, which would add an oven and a full-size refrigerator. And also includes new, an allocation for doors, new doors and carpeting. And we'll know in a few weeks if we've received that. I think the total requested was just under three hundred thousand dollars.
Two seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Should be able, couldn't get the pavement in there.
I know, it has to be. Doesn't apply to paving, and unfortunately, it doesn't apply to trees, planting trees. Even though they last ten years, it has to be a construction project that will, is, lasts for ten years. I was happy to attend the Veterans Day celebration that the American Legion put on, on Veterans Day. It was well-attended, and I wanted to tell, say that our deputy town clerk, Molly Droualamoe, did a great job on Election Day, it seemed to be running very smoothly when I voted here at the townhouse, and it was crowded, it was a lot, it was a lot of.
A lot of activity.
Big turnout for.
A non-presidential year.
Yes, and it went, I thought it went really well, and so I just wanted to say thank you for your work on that. And I'm going to let Supervisor McLaughlin talk about the exciting tree lighting that we attended. We were freezing our.
Before we get to the tree lighting, the, the Veterans Day ceremony, there was some humor in it, because Felix was sick, so the American Legion went into the townhouse and took out the chairs with the Boy Scouts, and took out the lectern that we were throwing out.
Oh, no.
Which had no microphone.
No microphone.
So when I got to, to the, to the stage, whatever you want to call it, I said, that's supposed to be in the garbage. So, so in the end, Joe said, well, it just screamed, so, in my speech, I said this is the first time I could scream with my wife not yelling at me. But it was, it was a very nice, the, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts were there, and it worked out very well, and the weather was pretty good, if I remember correctly.
Yes, it was warm on Veterans Day.
Yeah. So in addition to that, I did go, we did have our tree lighting.
Three.
I had several things to say. The first thing I want to say is I was right on time this year.
Yes, you were.
Great job.
The, actually, the, the Lox turned around to me and showed me their phone and said, it is now five o'clock. So we had the Lox at the beginning of it, I thought they were terrific.
They were.
The Chamber of Commerce, we combined with on their Small Business Saturday. They got the Girl Scouts to come in at Veterans Park at four o'clock and sing carols, which was very nice. I was there two, two different times, I came earlier, stayed around for about an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes, and then came back for the tree lighting. There was activity in that place all day, all day, and they had two horse carriages going around. They had, the one thing that they, they need to improve upon is they had one makeup artist, fresh painter, and that line was really, really long. So I think they need to look at that again. And they, again, created great weather. How they do that, I don't know. Because imagine if we didn't have great weather and all those kids on those bouncy and in the mud, that would have been a disaster. And at the, at the suggestion of Rudy, we not only lit the, the tree closest to the townhouse, we lit the other two trees as well, and I think that was a great idea, and the kids really got a kick out of it. I know my grandson did.
Bless you.
He ran right over to it.
My granddaughter had a meltdown.
So it, it, it was a very successful day for the town, and I'm. So it, it was a very successful day for the town, and I'm glad we were part of it. I attended the annual fire inspection for the Pelham Manor Fire Department on last Friday. They had the inspection in the firehouse itself, and then they had the dinner at the New York AC. I sat with Amy Pauling and some of the representatives at the Pelham Manor Board, which was very nice, actually. This past Thursday, I met the Rotary President and Vice President, Maggie Klein, and we took a photo op of the dedication of the bench that the Rotary donated to the town, and we put their 75th anniversary on it. So, I'm in the Pelham examiner's, I got another picture in there, so.
Not you're running your reelection picture.
Exactly, exactly. And again, just to go over with Laura, the SAM request, if we were able to get that, it would really spruce up the townhouse and like put that kitchen in that you guys are looking for, the senior citizens. So I hope that comes through. I don't think I have anything else. Okay, I think that's it, except for, because we passed the budget tonight, we do not have to have a second public meeting, which was scheduled, I think, for December 18th.
Yeah.
So, please notice, put a notice out that December 18th meeting is.
19th.
19th, right.
December 19th.
That's right, 19th, that's the Monday, yeah. Dan, can I just add, add one thing? The, the, we usually do like the Kwanzaa table.
We have a Kwanzaa.
Okay.
It's not a table, it's a, it's a, it was a, it's got the, the representation, the articles on it. If Philip can't find it, tell him to let me know, I'll just order another one. And it goes in the ground, so it's out there with the trees and the menorah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I think I did that two years ago, we got it.
There's also a date set apart aside at the townhouse for Kwanzaa that Jeff may be doing.
Okay.
So, he's reserved the day. He canceled, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But we did have it scheduled. Any other comments? You know, I, I just want to make one more comment. At the last meeting, I talked about all the fundraisers and things that I attended, and one of them I left out was the Junior League. I did not attend that, but I sent representatives. I sent my son and his wife. And the library director sent Hutson and his wife.
That's a good one to send.
And they both got together, the two sons, and won the ping pong.
Oh, yeah, let's be clear.
He told, he told, he told Dan it was ping pong, but it really was ping pong.
That's always a great event, I couldn't make it this year, but that's a really fun event.
I was there with Amy Paulin.
Oh, you were?
Mm-hmm, Amy Paulin was there, she goes to all of those, and I was there for the beginning.
So do I have a motion to? Does anybody have a motion to go in second session?
I don't think we need to.
So do I have a motion to end the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will ask, did it happen today?
I don't know, I don't know.
Kristen, do you know, did it happen today?
No, not till Wednesday.